Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Eastline Board of Finance Public Hearing. The date is Monday, May 18th, 2020, and the time is now 6:37 PM. We will begin our public hearing this evening by hearing a few comments from our first selectmen, Mark Nickerson.
Well, hi, you all, and thanks for having me, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak. This has been a devastating year, marked with so many different changes to our lifestyle, the way we live our lives. But here at the Town Hall, it's also changed the way we do business. Doing business, managing a town at my kitchen table is not what I had in mind, right? And meeting with my department heads over Zoom and not being able to face-to-face interact with people, with constituents, it's been a very difficult two or three months. On top of that, of course, we're in the budget season. And by executive order, we are forced to do things a little different. We met by Zoom, the Board of Selectmen met by Zoom, actually before COVID. We did our work at the Town Hall before the COVID pandemic shut everything down. But then we moved the budget to the Board of Finance, and in cooperation, we put the procedure off. We put the deliberation off of the Board of Finance's review of the budget as late as possible, so we could see how this played out. You know, we didn't know in early March what May would feel like, and we certainly do now. And nor do we know what the rest of the year will look and feel like. But right now, we know that we have a decent budget, a very good budget, a very well-thought-out, deliberate budget for the town and for the Board of Ed. These are, these are difficult times. Mental toughness has been very difficult to maintain during the last couple weeks, especially as this drags on. I'm seeing it with, from comments from citizens. When I bump into them on the boardwalk, I witnessed it on the beach this weekend. It's, it's difficult. I thank all the citizens who are paying attention to the rules, keeping each other safe. I think our sense of community has blossomed more so than ever. We know we're all in it together. We know that while we may be asymptomatic or be not in a danger zone, we know we could run into somebody who might be. I send prayers and blessings to the residents and the workers over at Bridebrook, who have been so devastated by this, over 30 deaths just in that one facility. And that's, that's sad, because they're, they're part of our community, too. And of course, the frontline workers who work there, who work at our police department and our fire department, are running our ambulances and the other long-term care facilities in town. These folks are putting it on the line every day. The folks at Stop and Shop, who are sustaining us with food and all, and all the other grocery stores in Tri-Town and the Costco, all those people that are out there working, so that some miniscule part of life can move on. This will be over. I appreciate everyone's patience and whenever possible, their acceptance of the rules. I'm devastated that I heard hair salons aren't opening up till June. This guy needs a haircut, something fierce. But anyway, listen, we are, we, the executive orders by the governor were very specific. Towns cannot have town meetings. We cannot fill the auditorium, and we cannot have a referendum. Very specific rules given by the executive orders, but also advice given by CCM and the Governor's Office. When the COVID-19 pandemic was developing, the town departments came together. The town department heads, myself, Anna Johnson, we came together, and we found ways to cut back on our town budget. Some of these things will have to be delayed till next year, the year after. Some things we'll just do without and we'll make do, and so some town services, we'll see, we'll see an impact. We'll see an impact, but the economy, the way it's going to be, and we know it's going to be a tough, tough year or two coming up for so many families, that it's the right thing to do. And I, I'm very proud of the department heads who came together and willingly went into their own budgets that were already very thin and gave back some more. $300,000 were the cuts that we came up with. I know that the Board of Finance did some more work on that. The, the the community will come together, the service to the community by this town, by the Board of Ed, which, with the Board of Ed has had to go through with all this, with the teach-at-home aspect, and what could be in the fall, the very same, and being prepared for that. My hat's off to you folks, and we're doing our best at the Town Hall. And I thank the Board of Finance for their hard work. This has not been, it's not an easy way to negotiate anything, never mind a $76 million budget. So my hat's off to the Board of Finance for your determination and your service to the community. It will be, it'll be, people will be grateful for what you've done, and we'll talk about this moment, maybe fondly sometime in the future. Certainly hasn't been, you know, a bed of roses. But at some point, we're gonna, we're gonna look back on this and say, we got through it, and we did the right thing, and we all came together and we made the right decision. So again, I applaud you all. Thank you for having me tonight.
Thank you, Mark, for your comments. I appreciate that very much. I understand the first selectmen may have to jump off and head to another meeting at 7:00 PM. So thank you again for your comments. And next, I would like to say that we will be hearing from either Dr. Timothy Hagan, the Chair of the Board of Education, or Jeff Newton, the Superintendent of Schools. I'm not sure who would like to go first.
I'll just, just, I'll just say one, one thing, and that is, Mark, you said, you said it very well. And Camille, your Board of Finance has, has really done a great job. And with that, I'll turn it over to Jeff, and he's gonna just make some high comments.
Yeah, thank you, Tim and Mark and Camille. And then, again, many thanks to the entire, you know, Board of Finance. You know, this was unprecedented at times. It was a real collaborative effort, you know, this year, and we appreciate, you know, your diligence, the questions that you asked, and the hard work, you know, the hours that went into, you know, this budget work to get us to, you know, to this point. I also want to thank the Board of Education. Board of Education since March had six meetings and five subcommittee finance meetings to really dive in and review, you know, our budget and where our numbers were and make reductions. And I also want to thank our, you know, our staff and our administration. You know, a lot of hours went in as well with, you know, getting us to this point. So thank you to everybody. You know, the Board of Ed and Administration, we truly understand, you know, the circumstances that we're in. We knew that, you know, the original budget that we had proposed needed to be reduced. Hence, you know, we did a lot of work over those six Board of Education meetings, meetings and everything in between, came up with $826,903, you know, for reductions, moving, you know, into the next year, out of next year's budget. In addition, you know, we are giving back $263,200 with end-of-the-year money this year. That's almost $1.1 million. We feel, you know, it was, again, a collaborative effort and the right thing to do. And I just want to point out, you know, we did have some savings with the school projects and not going out and borrowing the additional, you know, $400,000 and, you know, coming in, you know, under budget with that. So, so that all, that all helped and all came together for where the Board of Ed budget is. It's important for next year, you know, that we're prepared to embrace children that are coming to district after being out of school for six months. That's a long time to be away, never seen it in my lifetime, or, you know, any of our lifetimes. So we have to be prepared to support kids, and with next year's budget, you know, we'll be able to do that. And we will be eagerly anticipating, you know, their arrival back. There's three focus areas for next year. One is supporting, you know, our students and our staff. The staff have been out, you know, for a long period of time, so that transition back, and our families as well. Ensuring technology is in place. We have to make sure we're prepared next year to be working, you know, in school on a Friday, and then on Monday, we might be, you know, working remotely for a month, two months, like we are now. We have to be able to kick education and instruction into gear and keep the same level of learning and engagement occurring and the curriculum moving forward. So very important. And then the third one is the challenges with special education services in next year. We have a number of students that have individualized education plans, over 400 of them. And, you know, many of them are not getting what's supposed to be in their IEP. We have to be prepared to support those students, you know, next year and all of our students. So those challenges, those three areas are our focus. With technology, I want to again thank the Board of Ed and the Board of Finance for seeing and realizing the fact that we, we do need devices. We need those laptops to help move remote learning forward next year, so every child, you know, has one. That's part of our, our budget, you know, next year, part of the operating budget, as well as the acquisition plan. And, you know, again, we, we could be out of school for a long period of time next year and have to be able to flip that switch. So appreciate everybody's hard work. I'll, I'll leave it there, and thank you very much again for the opportunity and the work this year.
Okay, thank you both. With that, I think I'm going to dive right into the Board of Finance presentation this evening. So let me share that document with you. Can everybody see the Board of Finance PowerPoint slide on their screen?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right. So with that, we'll get started. Again, this is the public hearing on the town budget. On page two, we've listed out the Board of Finance members this evening. Myself as Chair, Ann Chacallo as Vice Chair, John Birmingham, Peter DeRosa, Anne Santoro, and Richard Steele. And I'd just like to take a moment to recognize Ann Chacallo, Peter DeRosa, and Richard Steele, because they were elected to this board less than a year ago and really have faced some daunting responsibilities their first go-round. So I just want to give a shout out to them and acknowledge their invaluable contribution to our team. And just to know that that'll go right to slide three. This is sort of a summary of our budget process this year, which looks different from every other year that, that we presented. It started out on March 11th with receiving the town and the Board of Education budgets, which represented an overall increase of 4.64% from the fiscal year that we are currently in. And then COVID-19 hit. This pandemic impacted our municipal budgeting process considerably. We rolled back all of our meetings that had previously been scheduled and tried to come up with a new schedule. And as Mark Nickerson had explained, Governor Lamont's Executive Order Number 7I, as in Icicle, suspended the need to have a budget referendum. And that's why we find ourselves in this place right now. The third bullet point shows that the BOF received a Board of Education Revised Adopted Budget, and we received this on May 7th of this year. And Jeff Newton had eloquently stated this, you know, the difficulty that they, that they saw in having to come up with additional reductions while acknowledging that in good conscience, it probably wasn't the best year to roll forward with some of those new initiatives they have been hoping for. The total amount of reductions came to over $826,000. The town side was faced with the same challenges, and they rose to the occasion. On May 11th, we received a town budget that had included Board of Selectmen recommendations for reductions to their budget in the amount of over $312,000. Once we received these new budgets to work with, our Board of Finance conducted five Zoom webinars, totaling nearly 20 hours with town personnel and Board of Education members discussing and deliberating the budgets that were before us. And then finally, just this past Thursday, on May 14th, we finished with our budget deliberations and adopted or approved a $76,191,073 budget for fiscal year 2020, 2021. That represents an overall budget increase of 2.7% from this year, and we estimated that would amount to a .17 mil increase. We say estimated here because the Board of Finance is tasked with having a special meeting on May 27th, which officially sets the mil rate for the next fiscal year. The next slide shows some revenue variances that we've had in the current fiscal year that we're in. So these variances are being reported as of the, as of the end of the month, April 30th, 2020. So we still have two more months of this fiscal year to get through. But when, when I show the actual surplus items in this list, that represents money in excess of what we budgeted for already. So anything additionally that we receive here will only improve our financial situation. Education cost sharing, we did receive nearly an additional $560,000. Building permits, together with zoning fees, added nearly an additional $302,000 to our budget this year. Conveyance taxes. That's what I finally referred, fondly referred to as the FLYP tax. It's real estate transactions on, on closed real estate transactions that generate revenues for our municipality, almost $75,000 over what was budgeted. Interest and liens in the prior and current year of over $42,000. And taxes from our prior year grant list exceeded what we expected by over $32,000. The next set of revenue items are what we estimate will have a shortfall of by the end of this fiscal year. And the first item you'll see is tipping fees commercial, and the second one is the landfill deposits and other recycling. Again, this is what we're currently short on as of April 30th. But it's my understanding that with the reopening of the town transfer station, that they've seen an increase in activity, so maybe we can improve upon that situation as well. The last item I included here was, I felt important. It's, it's, it's not very material, but it's important to understand how COVID affects, you know, our town finances and some of these programs that were being held for our, our seniors in town, you know, couldn't go afford. So that particular revenue item is down by $8,000, and it's not likely that we'll recover that by the end of the fiscal year. Next, we wanted to highlight some of the major budgeted capital projects and acquisitions that we have included in our upcoming budget year, starting with the $1.3 million Board of Ed Technology Plan, followed by enhanced technology coverage for our town to the $250,000. The police will be getting a computer-aided dispatch and records management system for $180,000. We need to make our final installment for mandatory revaluation of real estate properties in town, and that final installment amounts to $55,000. The Flanders Fire Department has a tanker truck that has been inoperable for quite some time. As, and it's my understanding they've been borrowing a truck from, from another source. So we felt that this was really critical to get this on the plan this year for $650,000. And both the Flanders and Niantic Fire Departments need radio upgrades to the tune of $211,000. In Public Works, it was deemed necessary and essential to acquire a sweeper for the tune of $275,000. There were other essential items that came before us, but we deemed that, that together with town personnel and our own Board of Finance members had the discussion, and we determined that they could be deferred for another year. Starting with Public Works, relating to the town road and infrastructure, that capital item was reduced from $950,000 to $500,000. Also in Public Works, we swapped out a $90,000 dump truck for a $60,000 pickup truck, saving about $30,000 in acquisition costs this year. And the last item there are Flanders and Niantic Fire Departments. We reduced the sets of turnout gear for the firemen from $26,000 to $13,000. Again, still necessary. Hopefully, we'll be able to be in a better situation next, this time next year. There's no guarantees, everybody understands, but we made sure that we earmark that in future years on the acquisition plan. On slide six, this column, right, can you guys see my arrow as I'm moving it? Yeah, okay. So in this column right here, this is what we actually spent in the fiscal year 2018, 2019, to the tune of $71, almost $72 million. This is the year that we're currently in. We've appropriated in our budget $74,187,708 for the current year that we're in. And this is what the Board of Finance approved last Thursday, May 14th, $76,191, $191,073. So you can see the line-by-line item increases and a significant decrease in the capital outlay and equipment. And you add up all these numbers, and we're looking at a 2.7% increase in the budget this year. Moving on to slide seven. This 2.7% increase translates to $2 million, $2,3,365, again with an estimated increase of .17 in the mil rate. Minimal mil rate increase that you see can be attributed in part to including $900,000 in revenue from the general fund. So from the Board of Education, they are expecting to return to the town $263,000. And the town itself in a combination of excess revenues over what was budgeted and decreased spending on the expense side, that amount totals to almost $1.3 million. Now bear in mind, that excess of the education cost-sharing grant is actually in this number right here, 1.2, 1.3 million dollars. So the total that was expected to be returned to the town at the end of this fiscal year, June 30th, 2020, is $1,560,000. So we decided to ease the tax burden as much as possible by bringing back $900,000 into the operating budget next year. What this means, if everything goes according to plan, we will still be building our reserves. We will still be adding to our rainy day fund. Many of our surrounding towns will find themselves in a negative position in their rainy day fund. We can still add to that. And this is the last slide this evening. We've tried to keep it brief and hit on the major points that mostly everybody would be interested in. These are the scenarios for a mil rate increase. So let's suppose you live in a home assessed at $250,000. You are paying $7,048 in taxes in this fiscal year. And next year, based on the .17 mil rate increase, you will be expected to pay $7,090. That translates to a difference of $42 a year, or $3.50 a month. Somebody that's living in a home valued at $350,000 is currently paying $9,867. Next year, that increase would be expected to be, go up to $9,926, a difference of $59 a year, or $4.92 a month. And our final example shows a house assessed at $450,000. That is your situation. You are paying $12,686 in this fiscal year, and you will, you can anticipate a tax bill next year of $12,762, translating into a difference of $76 per year, or $6.33 per month. And I think that for all those folks that are listening in, I think that you can agree that that is the smallest increase that we've passed on to the taxpayers in quite some time. So with that, that is our present, that concludes our presentation. And what I would like to do next is move down on the agenda, hear from some of the folks that may be dialed into our webinar. This is Agenda Item Five, Public Discussion, Comments From the Public. So let me back there. Okay, I need tech support. Okay, there we go. I'm going to take a look at the list of attendees that we have. I see that we have 33 people on the call. If anybody would like to address the board or speak during public comments, first, I would ask that you be at least 18 years of age and eligible voter and paying property taxes to our municipality. That is advice that we have received from our town council. And two, I would ask that if you would like to speak to, please limit your comments to two or three minutes. Maybe we can let you go to five, seeing how many attendees there are. Is it, there's 33 again. I think last year, we must have had 330 or so. Okay, so is anybody on the call that would like to address the Board of Finance this evening? And if you would like to address this, if you could please raise your hand, if you know how to do that. I don't see any raised hands. If, if you're not, okay, good. We have one. PL. PL, I've unmuted you. Could you please state your name and address for the record?
My name is Pat Larkin, 14 Oak Hill Drive, Nantucket, Connecticut. I appreciate the hard work that everyone has done here, but it's been pretty hard to follow what you've been doing, because if you don't want to go back and look at the videos, which are four-hour videos, there's no meeting minutes summarizing what's happened, so that we could see what's transpired between, without watching the four-hour video, which I think is pretty unfair for us taxpayers. And I, because I think I remember at one point, the fire chief saying that he could probably go without his truck this year, since they've been, not had one for a couple of years, and he could do another year without it. That would be a $650,000 decrease. So I would like to see the meeting minutes published for these meetings before we go forward with setting a mil rate and everything. So I think the public could have a, an honest look at what's been happening and get their comments settled through that. That's it.
Thank you, Pat. You are correct. It looks like the most recent meeting minutes that have been posted on our website are from May 9th. So we, we are behind in the number of meeting minutes to be posted to our website. I don't, I hate to use this as an excuse, but you know, the, the town charter does allow us some time to get those posted, and we're sort of working in a condensed timeframe. But certainly, I would expect that those meeting minutes would be posted by the time this group comes back together on May 27th to set the mil rate.
Can I ask another question?
Yes.
Is there a reason why we're going so fast with this? With CNN, as things are changing daily, is this, why aren't we waiting to put this out until June or July, when maybe we can have a real town meeting? Because we don't know what's going to happen within the next month or two.
That is true, and because we don't know exactly when the orders will be lifted, we felt that we needed to move along and get a budget passed, because there's a number of bills that need to be paid on July 1st, and we needed to make, have, make sure that we And we needed to make, have, make sure that we have enough time to get the tax bills out. After we, after we set our mill rate on May 27th, then the tax collector has just a few short weeks to get the information together, the programs installed, to generate the tax bills, to get them mailed out to the folks. And we need to start collecting that money pretty quickly in order to cover the bills that we have over this summer.
Well, couldn't he do, just like they do with automobiles, send out adjusted tax bills in October or whatever, and send out for this coming year, the same tax bill that we had last year?
So
And then once, and then once a budget is passed, send out an amended tax bill.
That certainly, that certainly would have been a possibility and we, for whatever reason, chose not to take that road.
Okay, well, I'd just like, I would just like the board to think about that and maybe we could change the way that we're going now and go that route. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Pat. Is there anybody else listening to this webinar that would like to address the board? Okay, we have a John. Let's see. John, if you could please state your full name and address for the record. The unmute him. Like, there we go. John, can you hear us? John, you're on the line. Would you like to address the Board of Finance? Okay, there is a John that has raised his hand, but and is unmuted, but is not speaking, so we'll move on. So anybody else listening in on the call that would like to address the Board of Finance? Okay, John, John is back. Let's see. There is a John on the call. I've unmuted you. You're, you're free to speak to the Board of Finance if you state your full name and address for the record. Hello? Hey. Mute him again. I will ask one more time, one, one final time. Um, it, let me, let me, let me try this. There's 32 callers on the webinar. There are some people that phoned in and I don't know their names and I, so I don't know if they have the ability to raise their hand. Let me offer this up. If you're listening and you would like to address the Board of Finance, please call me on my cell phone, 860-857-7330. Identify yourself and I can unmute you on this webinar.
Camille.
Yes.
Can you just repeat your phone number for everybody, just so they make sure they got it?
Yes. So if the board, okay, we have a caller. It's from 860-691-4572. Hello, hello, this is Camille. John Drabek, are you on? Okay, can yeah, I know it's difficult, John. Hang on. 691-4572. I don't see you on the webinar. Are you listening? Oh, okay, so, okay. I, let me try this. I'll put you on speaker, so hopefully that'll get recorded, okay? And please limit your comments, John, to five minutes or less, okay? Okay, hold on. Okay, John. Name and address for the record.
John Drabek, 18 Drabek Road. I sit here and I look at this computer screen. I see members of the Board of Finance. I see Board of Ed people here, school superintendent. This is a Board of Finance meeting, correct?
Yes.
Hey, I'm a little hurt by this. I thought I'd be addressing the Board of Finance. I'll get right to the point. I, my family has been in business in this town for 100 years on this same piece of property. After observing town meetings, all this stuff since I was growing up, I gotta say, the Board of Finance hasn't done its job. Here we are in the most challenging times in history and you people can't give us a flat budget. I know you're all worried about little computers for the kids. Half these parents, more than half these parents, spend more for entertainment, for TVs and all that other entertainment than they are for these computers. Say when the parents buy their own computers. Here, my taxes go up year after year. It's been 30 years since this town held a flat budget. It sure as heck ain't gonna hurt if you hold it flat once more. That's once every 30 years. Yeah. Now, there's a bill collection agency in town. They had about eight employees. They weighed, eight of them, seven of them off. You know why? Because there's money out, no money out there to collect. The guy says, I can't pay my people to sit there and not collect money. There's no money out there. There's your first clue where we are. I know you sit there, you got the Bird Board of Ed chirping in your rear all the time. We need this, we need that, the quality of education. We moved here because of the education system. I'm sorry, I can't afford it anymore. It's just generation after generation. Board of Finance keeps exposing us to this abuse. Anyway, that's about all I gotta say. We can't afford it anymore. We need a break. It's time. When is the last time we had a disaster like this? So if people work for the taxpayer, if you don't work for the Board of Ed, you gotta do something for us for a change.
I appreciate that, Mr. Drabek. Thank you very much. And, and thank you for, bye. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Bye. Okay. Anybody else listening on this call, would you like an opportunity to address the Board of Finance this evening during the public hearing? You could raise your hand on the webinar or call me on my cell phone, 860-857-7330. Okay, seeing no hands and not receiving any phone calls, I think it
Camille.
Yes, Anne.
There's a Q and A at the bottom of my screen. I haven't clicked it on yet, but maybe someone has written in a question.
Oh. Oh, thanks, Anne Santoro. This comment says on the Q and A, I would recommend that those who choose to comment not have their phone numbers shared. Not necessarily a question, just a comment. Okay. And I really, PL is talking. Um. Pat Larkin, did you wish to address the board a second time?
Yes, I would. I think, Pat Larkin, again, from Oak Hill Drive. Could you hear me well?
Yes.
I, I think my first comments about waiting to pass the budget just took a big boost by the lack of participation on this Zoom application or the phone application. I think there's many people in town that are uncomfortable with this. And you know, our older generation is uncomfortable with it. It's not an easy thing to do. It shows because you just said last year, we had 330 people at our town meeting. The year before, there were probably close to 80. And every town meeting that I've gone to for the budget has had between 50 and 100 people there giving comments and giving a lot of comments, a lot of feedback to the Board of Finance before the mill rate is set. So I don't, I still don't understand why we have to go so fast with this when we could go based on everything on last year's budget. We'll have enough money to pay the bills that are due in the, in the coming months, July, August, and September. And you have to hope that within that timeframe, we can hold a real town meeting on the budget. Thanks for your time.
All right. Thank you, Pat. Would any of the other Board of Finance members like to address Pat Larkin's concern? I, I will say we've tried our very best by trying to, to get public to participate in our process. We opened up a comment section on our town website and there's been, I'm looking now, 43 comments that have been submitted so far. And I would say pretty much they're 50/50 in support of what we did and maybe not so happy with what we did. I have another call coming in. Let me see who this is. This is Camille, who's calling. Hi, John. Okay, should I put you on speaker again? Sure. Okay, you're on speaker.
Yeah, John Drabek, John Drabek, to me again. He, this caller was right. If the town doesn't settle its budget after three tries, we have to settle at zero. No increase. We, that's the way it is, especially after it's gone in the old days. If it fails at three referendums, it stays at zero. There's nothing wrong with that. Believe me, the town will survive. Hopefully, the taxpayers and citizens will survive. I mean, they come first. Not, not education, not highway, not sanitation or anything else you might have moved here for. And that's about all I have to say. I don't even have any good jokes for you. Thank you.
Hey, thank you.
All right, I got, I got a joke if you got time.
We don't, John. Can you save that for another meeting?
It was funny, but some other time.
Some other time. Appreciate it. Thanks.
Okay.
Bye. I have searched. Okay, we have a few more hands. Okay. I believe this is Bonnie Dombrowski on the line. Let me unmute her. Bonnie, can you hear us? Sometimes there's a little
Hello?
Hi, is this Bonnie Dombrowski?
Yes, it is. I'm sorry.
Bonnie, can you just state your name and address for the record?
103 Long Road. It's Bonnie Dombrowski. Just wanted to comment that, you know, maybe one reason that there's not as many participants voicing their support is because there's so many parents who are trying to deal with, you know, homeschooling their kids all day. And so, you know, it's kind of difficult to sometimes join the meetings. And so I think I wouldn't necessarily judge by the participation that you get in this call and make decisions based just purely on what you're hearing. I do want to thank the Board of Ed and the Board of Finance for all your hard work in this time and being creative and trying to find solutions. And I just can't ask that you, you know, continue to do that and take everyone's, you know, interest into consideration, but don't just make decisions based on the vocal minority. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I believe we have an Amy Rogers on the line. Can you hear us, Amy?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, thank you. My name is Amy Rogers and my address is 35 Legendary Road. And I just wanted to thank you for the lengthy process that you have gone through and the collaboration of the Board of Ed and the Board of Finance. It's, it, it does not feel like a rushed process to me. There's been several long meetings. I know you have all devoted a tremendous amount of time to this process and I appreciate your efforts. I also appreciate the opportunity to place comments. I believe it was on a town website link that I went to and had an opportunity over several weeks to comment. So as Bonnie, I have two children and so I intended to make a comment on there and didn't get an opportunity. I was reading those comments before I joined tonight. So I wanted to, you know, thank everybody for taking the time. One other comment I wanted to make is that this first select minute had commented that there were certain items that could be deferred and I appreciate that. I just, when it comes to children, I feel like their social emotional needs are not something we can defer right now. And that technology piece is key in helping our kids to function next year and work through this process. So thank you for your hard work and fully support this budget. Thank you.
Okay, Amy, thank you for your input. And if Amy and Bonnie are done speaking, you can remove your hand. Okay. Okay, I just want to make sure, Bonnie, if you wanted to speak again, you could put the hand back up. I just wasn't sure if you were done yet. We have another person that would like to address the Board of Finance. Suler, so let me unmute Suler. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can. It's Robin Soul. 14 McLeaney Drive, Niantic, Connecticut. I'm a lifelong resident of East Lime, a product of the East Lime School System and a very proud employee, having taught in the district for, I believe, 14 years now. I understand concerns voiced by a lot of people and understand the sentiment expressed by Mr. Drabek. I do want to just correct a misconception. There are, yes, a lot of families in town who are very fortunate. There are also a lot of families who are really having a very difficult time right now. And to try to invest in the technology that their children need in order to do remote learning would be a massive challenge, especially given the state of the economy right now. You know, a lot of these people are surviving on unemployment checks. They're working from home or have lost their jobs, homeschooling their children. And I really appreciate all the time that the Board of Finance and the Board of Ed have put into this. I encourage you to please keep the budget as it is. I listened into the last meeting and yes, the budget has been cut for many, many years. This year, we were working towards getting things where we needed them and then the pandemic hit. And I think the Board of Ed has been fabulous in knocking things down to the bare bones, but we really, really need this technology. I have students of my own who have had to borrow from the school and, you know, I'm so appreciative of the school and district being able to provide them with the technology they need. But I think this is vitally important. And yeah, people come here for the school district and the beautiful town that we have. People like myself have been brought up and gone to school and love it and stay. I just, I know neighboring communities have a technological advantage over East Lime and I really would hate to see people start to leave town or decide not to come because we're lacking. Thank you for your time and your effort. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you for your comment, for participating. Have a good night.
Thank you. You as well.
We have another listener. Lisa Picarazzi.
Hi, y'all. Lisa Picarazzi, can you hear me?
We can hear you fine.
All right, Oak Hill Drive, Niantic. So I wanted to just talk a little bit about the technology part of the budget. I think that that number was one point three million. Am I right, Camille, that I saw up on the screen?
Yes.
So I, I get the importance of it. Jeff, I hope you're listening. I get the importance of it. I don't, I didn't watch all the meetings this budget season. I watched several. I don't know what the one point three million is. I don't know where that number comes from. If it's a flat calc based on the number of kids in the school system times a unit rate for a device. I'm not sure what that's based on. I'd be grateful for some information on that. And to follow up on that, I'm, I'm just, I, I get the importance of it, all right? Whether, beyond the pandemic, it just needs to be the place that we need to go. What I'm struggling with is the cost. And I wonder, have we looked at leasing devices and maybe tablets instead of Chromebooks? I mean, I didn't follow all these details and I'm sure you guys did. But I don't, I don't have any information and I'm, I always get nervous about buying devices because they're obsolete in a few years. You got to deal with the maintenance on all of them. I wonder how many other schools you guys have benchmarked with, both immediately surrounding our town and maybe other places in the state or out of the state to try to, you know, get a feel for how we could, how we can do this to lessen the tax burden the most, but give our kids what they need. So I get that we need them, all right? I want to just be clear on my support of that, but I don't know, the number, the one point three million, is that a, is that buying three thousand devices? What's it made up of?
Okay, Jeff, would you care to address this question or do you want me to bring Amy perhaps on into the meeting?
I can start and then if we want to have Amy pop in, we can, maybe if Amy wants to talk about the lease. Lisa, first off, hi, nice to hear your voice. Yeah, we, we've gone through, you know, all of this pertains to, you know, looking at other districts, talking about, you know, leasing versus buying. You know, the, the one point three is the borrowed money, which is paid back over five years. The breakdown is high school mobile devices, four hundred and sixty-six thousand nine hundred. Middle school mobile devices, three hundred and sixty-eight thousand. Grade four mobile devices, eighty-seven four iPads for our K and one students, seventy-four. And then our, an update to our teacher devices as well, it's three hundred and seven, one twenty-five. So that, that's the specific, the specific breakdown of, you know, how the numbers work through the acquisition plan, the dollars for, you know, for next year.
So thanks for that, Jeff. So, so what do we do in five years? This is what I worry about because they're, they're going to be out of date or up, they're going to need update. That's how this business goes.
Yeah, what we're, what we're doing is avoiding having another incident where we've got to go out and spend one point three million dollars. We're getting ourselves on a cycle of replacement, Lisa. So it's, it's going to be a cost each year, but it's going to be a much lesser cost and will be the same amount year after year after year. Because we're always going to have to replace devices after a period of time. You know, when our seniors leave, those devices are going to be dropped back down to other students, you know, in the district. So it's, it's getting us on a replacement cycle that will then be able to balance the budget as it pertains to the same cost, you know, year after year.
So what are we anticipating a year, roughly? What are we banking on the year after year cost to be every year?
I don't have the exact number off the top of my head, Lisa, as to what that will be. I mean, we got to get into the cycle here to see, you know, get ourselves situated first and then we'll work through that number. But it will be the cost, you know, each year. It's not going to be anywhere near, you know, one point three million dollars, that's for sure.
No, I'm thinking it isn't, but I just wondered if you had some order of magnitude estimate what that's going to be going forward because that's, that's going to be a big chunk of money every year. And it would be good to have some idea of what that is so we can plan around that. You know, are we talking two hundred and fifty thousand every year? Are we talking, I don't know, four hundred, five hundred thousand a year, every year? What are we talking?
Between that two and three hundred thousand is what I would estimate.
Okay, um, is there any, are you hearing? If there's any paradigm shift in, I know it doesn't exist right now, at least I don't think it does, in federal dollars supporting a technology program. But times have changed, right? The earth has shifted a little bit here. Are we kind, are we working with, with our, like Courtney and our state, our federal, our senators and to see if there is any kind of movement on a federal level to support a program like this? I know here to fore there isn't, but I'm, I'm thinking, getting out of the box on this.
Well, there, there was a big movement, you know, across the state. I think it was about sixty thousand devices. But those are going to your, your cities, your Hartford, your Bridgeport, your New Havens. They're, they're not coming to, to East Line.
But that's state money you're talking, right?
I believe that's state money. I have not heard anything about federal money.
Yeah, it just might be good to poke at that a little bit. I, I think maybe this is the time for that to shift. All right, that's all I got. Thanks.
Thanks, Lisa.
Thanks, Lisa. Tim, Tim, did you want to add to that?
I just wanted, I just wanted to add that Amy Drown, our Assistant Superintendent, made an outstanding, very, very clear presentation to the Board of Finance when we presented our revised budget to the Board of Finance. And it has, it has a lot of detail that Lisa was asking for. And if people, I mean, it's, you have it, it's, it's available, it's recorded. You can access it through the town website, through the Board of Finance posting. So that's just for people to know if they want more detail.
Yep, thank you for mentioning that, Tim. And tonight's presentation also will become part of the minutes of this meeting. So they'll be on record as well for people to go back and reference them, those slides. Okay, would anybody else attending this webinar like to address the Board of Finance this evening? Is there anybody else on the call that would like to address the Board of Finance? You may do so by raising your hand if you're on the computer or calling my cell phone, eight six zero eight five seven seven three three zero. Okay. Seeing no hands and not receiving a phone call, I think maybe safe to assume that we're done. So with that, unless anybody else sees something that I'm missing on the screen, does anybody else see any? Wait, we have another Q and A question. Let's see. Okay, this is a comment from Esteban Garcia, ten Winston Road. Thank you to the Board of Finance for their hard work and for trying to keep information transparent. The perceived lack of interest by the public compared to last year should not be used to delay the budget process. Last year, we were facing a large reduction to the proposed education budget. So in, so interest was at its peak as people were upset. This year, education advocates, understand the need for a bare bones budget and recognize the hard work that both the Education and Finance Boards have put in to develop the budget so they may not be as vocal as they were last year. Thank you, Esteban, for your contribution to this evening's webinar. Thank you very much. So seeing no more Q and As, seeing no chats and seeing no additional hands, I think it might be safe to assume that that concludes our public discussion, comments from the public portion of this, this meeting this evening. So with that, I would like to move on to Agenda Item Six, Board Comments. Would any of our Board of Finance members like to go first with a, with a comment this evening? If so, raise your hand. Yes, Peter DeRosa.
Yeah, if no one else is interested in going first, I'll be happy to. As, as Camille said, this is my first full term on, on the Board of Finance. If I think if I knew what I was signing up for, I probably would have reconsidered. Certainly didn't expect the challenges that we have this year. I just want to respond to a couple of the comments that were made. First of all, the Board of Ed budget, I think we, we had a wonderful opportunity to work alongside with the Board of Ed with, with incredible challenges. I appreciate the Board of Ed taking the budget back and reworking it and doing it with our, with, with the Board of Finance people involved in that process. So the budget that present, that they, the final budget they presented was very easy to pass. We certainly understand the need for technology and especially with the remote learning that sort of made that, made that very real. The town budget, the same way, the town went back, we did the budget, we beat up on them a little bit more, got some more savings out of it. And in terms of the tax rate, I would love to have come to this meeting with a zero percent tax increase. I think that would have been our goal. We would all love to have done that. And the reason that I supported the slight increase was because we don't know what's happening next year. If we were confident that this COVID virus thing was going to be over this year and we would not be dealing with it next year, I think we would have had a zero percent budget increase this year. The problem that I see is that we don't know what's going to happen next year. We don't know if school's going to go into session in the fall. We don't know if we're going to be dealing with the same kind of situation a year from now. So what we did as a Board of Finance was we tried to balance the desire to have a zero percent increase with the need to shore up our reserves so that if we're faced with the same situation a year from now, that we can handle it. And that was a very difficult decision. And if you watched the recording of that, that board meeting, it was, I think, a remarkable interchange between the board members and also, I think, with a very reasonable solution. So that's, that's my reason for, for supporting the slight increase. And I think we, we had to make it slight, obviously because of the economic challenges that many of our citizens are facing. But we also had to make sure that we could face this challenge if it continues into next year. And that, I think, is the hardest challenge that we faced as a board is not knowing what next year was going to bring. And I may be out of line in commenting on the request to delay the Board of, the budget decision. And I think my, my, my answer is the same. If we knew that this was going to be resolved in a month or so, I think we could talk about delaying the decision until we had all the numbers in and make a decision to move forward with the board. But we don't know what the future is going to bring. Things are changing daily. We get notifications daily, different from the notifications we had a day before. So we're trying to cover all our bases. So I appreciate everybody's interest. I certainly understand a desire for a zero percent increase. But we, we had to prepare ourselves for unknown future. So thank you for the time and I look forward to the rest of the year with the Board of Finance.
Thanks, Peter. Thanks for your comments and your contribution again. Is there another Board of Finance member that would like to make a comment? Yes, Ann Chikello.
Good evening. I think the main important part for me was going to all the, you know, Board of Selectmen and Board of Education meetings. So I understood where their budgets were coming from. And the other thing while I was considering all the budgets was the technology. And the reason the technology piece was so important is because as first, we don't know where the schools are going to be next year, when they're going to be out of school, when the kids are going to be out of school. And also with the town, anything that dealt with technology was something that we supported. And, and that was really my main focus. I think we did take, I think it was nine hundred thousand dollars basically out of that rainy day fund to put toward the taxes. And I think next year, it's going to be unclear, you know, day by day, as we know, it's very fluid as to where we're going to go. So next year, to keep the tax rate down, we're going to have to have money also in that rainy day fund. And I think we're going to have to pull probably next year even more money out. And I think that the town government and the Board of Ed is likewise going to have to have a really bare bones budget next year. Because I think that there's going to be a second surge and up until the time they get actually a vaccine that can be widely distributed, we're going to have, you know, issues. So I think it's time for, you know, both the Board of Ed and the, and the town to start thinking even for next year and saying, you know, where can we cut? So that, that's really how my thought process went. And I'm already looking forward to next year thinking, you know, how, how can we go forward and try to keep it as low as possible? So I just wanted to explain my thought process. You know, I've literally been thinking about this pretty much nonstop for the past few months. This was not any kind of decision that we came to lightly, listened to everybody. And I just want the public to, to know that, that this was not something that, you know, was off the cuff. And I, I do think that though, attending the Board of Ed meetings, the Board of Selectmen meetings was the best way to understand where they were coming from. And I'm hoping that next year, that, you know, things do get better. I mean, that's, you know, that's everybody's hope. But I think that once we get the vaccine, then things will get better. But it's going to take time for the economy to, you know, to improve. So I think that's, that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Ann. Really appreciate your comments tonight. Anybody else, Richard, John, or Ann, would you like to come forward with a board comment? Yes?
I mute myself. You know, I'd like to first thank the public participants tonight. I think it's just wonderful with all the stresses and strains of what's going on that members of the public, and I can see by the participant, participants here, you know, are zoom, zooming in here. And thank you also for those if they couldn't come to the meeting tonight, have posted their comments and thoughts and questions on the town website. For me personally, you know, public participation is so central. It's, it's why I'm on the Board of Finance, you know, for my previous endeavors. But I'm really happy to see that, however limited, you know, it necessarily has to be. And trust me, I miss the face-to-face meetings so much. I miss all the restrictions on some of our liberties, referendum being one of them. And I think that's a, a good example of one of the stresses and strains on this Board of Finance. You know, we, we are not by the order of the governor not having a referendum. And so that added pressure, you know, is something that we as a board have had to deal with. And I have to say, and it's not a pat on the back, but a collective thank you to the Board of Finance members because I think we've handled it very professionally, very well. And I think we've adopted a very reasonable budget that addresses the current situation. It considers the future and requires a pretty modest increase in our mill rate. All this in the middle of, you know, of a pandemic. You know, I think it's some kind of a Herculean effort by us and by the town, by the Board of Education, every department. And I think it's something that in, in some ways, we should be a, a little proud of, if I could say. You know, back to the budget itself, we have examined it, re-examined it, reviewed it, re-reviewed it. I honestly can't think of something I've examined and reviewed this much in a long time. So I think that the public should be happy with that fact and, or appreciate that fact, if you would. I wanted to go back to something I talked about in my introductory remarks a couple of meetings ago. And I talked about guidelines and in the face of all of this chaos, how we have to try to get grounded. And, you know, basically, And, um, you know, basically, I was able to, um, and I think the board also follow these basic rules of the road when you're budgeting, which is to determine your revenue, make sure the expenses are justified. Consider the financial landscape and stresses and go ahead and plan for the future, but protect that unassigned fund balance. For those participating tonight who weren't at those meetings, there was a a long discussion the other night about last week about the unassigned fund balance and its importance. Our job is not just to, you know, set the mill rate, try to keep the taxes low. It's to ensure that services are provided in the town by the revenues that come in. And one guarantee of having those services is having an unassigned fund balance. That's your rainy day fund. If we have no fund, it's very hard to say that we could in a secure way provide services. So I think that that's an important point for participants and all to understand. Basically, I I'd like to say that, you know, I pretty much followed the precepts. Is it perfect? No, we had to compromise. And I think Pete, Peter De Rosa, you know, who spoke first here, made an excellent point about the sort of give and take that went on. It was a pretty remarkable give and take. And you know, would I have wanted the federal revenues that have come now to or will be coming to Board of Education be put on the revenue side? Yes, but as a group, we couldn't decide on that. So so be it for now. Would I have preferred to have a little bit more in the rainy day fund? Yes. But to keep the tax rate low, as low as possible, you know, there's had to be a give and take there. So again, another point that I hope the public appreciates. You know, going forward, I think it's going to be really important that all understand too that our work will not end with the setting of this mill rate. This as as Ann mentioned, it it will be a very difficult year and the year following will be a difficult year. So our work will continue to, you know, monitor trends, monitor federal funds that come to us. Have Anna Johnson speak to us about advice she's getting from our financial advisor, health advisors. All this goes in the pot. So it's highly complex, tons of competing interests, competing issues. And I think we, I think we, you know, all in all, done a, you know, a very good job. So you know, and I thank the town side and the Board of Education for really, you know, going back and looking at those budgets and 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 doing a, you know, a great job at that. And I'm very happy to say that with a little bit of give and take, you know, our students will have the technology that they need for for these very, you know, difficult times. It's not just, you know, losing that face to face with a teacher. It's also losing, you know, the socialization process. So this is all very important. So I I, you know, I welcome all the comments and and thanks again. I I just wanted to make one point about Pat Larkin had asked about meeting minutes. And even though under executive orders, a lot of the traditional meeting procedure has been, you know, some has been stretched and whatever and bent. We still have a requirement to to post meeting minutes and it's it's a seven day requirement. So we're we're still, I can still do some math in my head. I think we're we're kind of in that neighborhood with the previous week's minutes. So and another point about the fire truck, I know it's a board individually, we went over to Flanders Fire Department to be able to observe the operational system there and Chief Ricks basically gave a tour of that. We've gotten a lot of information about the fire engine in question, which is quite old, twenty six years old, if I'm not mistaken. Let's see, twenty five years old. And it is out of service. And a point that Chief Ricks made, which I think is very important. COVID or no COVID, he's got to put out fires. We have twenty square miles of hydrant less space in the town. So but I think he gave a quite convincing data, you know, for me, and I think for the rest of the members of the board. So just for the public to know that. And that's it for now. Thanks for bearing with my long talk, but thanks.
All great comments, Ann. Thank you very much. Okay. And I see Rich Steele would like to make a few comments.
Yes, I I'd like to thank Ann for her, well, both Ann's for their their wisdom and your your tenants of the four main steps to go through in considering the budgets was was very helpful for a newcomer like myself. I think one other consideration that it was in the article in the day, but I think has slipped by a lot of people is that another reason why our budget costs were a little bit higher this year were because we looked at a ninety eight percent collection rate rather than a ninety eight point four percent collection rate. And for a naive person like me, I didn't realize that would bump up your total cost because you you can't expect to receive the the same revenue. Another major point is that both on the town side and the school side, the vast majority of the budget are are expenses that are encumbered by contractual agreements. There are fixed costs that make up the majority of the budgets on both sides of the equation. And it's very difficult to start paring down things when those increases are built into the mix. And it's also very difficult to address those increases at the very last minute of the game. You you have to be able to anticipate. And if you look at all the surrounding towns, nobody touched any of the contractual agreements. Because one, you have legal costs that would be incurred. And two, then you would have to start with negotiations with the various parties and that could be process. The the rainy day fund is there for a reason. And as Camille said, and and I as I shared with Camille, if this isn't a rainy day, who knows what it is? But as to John and Ann's points about you need to still keep preserving the rainy day fund, we tapped more into what we were giving back to it than some parties would like. We worked in a collaborative way, but at the end of the day, we were still able to build the rainy day fund in in some manner. Next year is going to be a very, very difficult year. And I think as other members have said, our job isn't done. We're probably starting on next year's budget tomorrow. And if we can kind of keep our eye on the ball and see where the trends are taking us, maybe we can do some of these tougher decisions that weren't available to us this year to go for that. And as Ann had mentioned about the the fire department, they are so bare boned. It is amazing. They do an amazing job and much of their budget is funded through the ambulance society. And I don't know if the public is aware of that. Without that added increase in revenue to the town, which they don't have to do, we would be in a lot more dire straits. I think every department tried as hard as they could to pare down the costs. And it was very beneficial for those of us on the Board of Finance that both the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Education took a second look at things before we got going with things. It was very, very helpful and they had some very insightful decisions that they made. I hope and pray that the next year goes well. I I hope that medical innovations help us and that we all keep our social distancing, which for the schools, it may be that that blended education of kids going like one or two days a week to get the socialization, but to have that social distancing in place, we can't have them go more than that. So my kudos to everybody on the board and I'm sorry if some of the public is displeased with what we came up with, but we did the best we could with a very difficult situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. Appreciate your comments as well. John Birmingham, is there anything that you would like to say?
I think I'll finish up now that I'm back. And all my years on the Board of Finance and working alongside some of the other members of the town, this has been one of the hottest, most difficult budget seasons I've seen. We got hit with three or four months before the end of the year on a budget season with this COVID issue. And there were so many unknowns that that affected our decisions that it made it difficult for us to come up with answers. But through the corporate cooperation and compromises that we all made together, even though some of us probably thought one way and some of us thought another way. One example is the the unassigned fund balance. I would have liked to have kept a little more money in there as a as a cushion for next year because we don't know what's going to happen next year. Next year could be even more difficult than this year. So I know Jeff, Chairman of Board of Ed, had a lot of meetings, made some difficult cuts. And some of us on the Board of Finance attended some of their workshops to get a little clearer view of what goes on inside the Board of Ed. And the same goes for Mark and all these department heads. They had to make some tough decisions to where to cut. And I just hope that next year isn't going to be as bad as this year, but I'm afraid it is going to be because there's so many people out of work. There's a lot of businesses that are shut down. Even if they open up the the economy tomorrow, it's not going to come back right away. It's going to take months, maybe a couple of years to come back to what it used to be. So that being said, thank all my fellow board members for the work we did. We put in a lot of hours, a lot of meetings. I wish we had the old way of being at Town Hall, having people in front of us. Doing this by webinar in a way is a little more difficult than sitting in front of everybody and being able to ask questions and have them ask us questions. But time will tell and we'll see what how it goes. Thank you.
Thanks, John. I really appreciate your comments as well. So I'll I'll just end the board comment section with making just a couple of statements very quick. One related to the budget, you know, we can't be, I would be remiss without thanking Anna Johnson and Karen Zemetric, these these ladies just double their hours of work during this budget season. And without them, you know, we we truly have a much tougher job. So thank, thank you to both Anna and Karen. And I'd like to make a comment unrelated to the budget. I was fairly excited today. I was watching the news all day. There's a company out there called Moderna, who actually is making great progress towards finding a vaccine for this COVID nineteen. And they announced that they are already in human clinical trials, which is astounding. This this, the speed of which these companies, you know, Moderna, as well as Pfizer and J and J are working, is just astounding. And that really speaks volumes, the level of cooperation between private industry and government, trying to trying to really, you know, get the resources together to get a quick solution to this terrible problem that we're having. So I have great hopes that we that we will have a vaccine by the end of the year. To me, that doesn't necessarily translate into a healthy economic picture. So I agree with the majority of my board members that our work is still cut out for us. This is not over. There are still hard decisions ahead. But we'll just, as always, we'll promise to do the best that we can. We can't please everyone, but but hopefully the majority of people will will see how it is that we did arrive at our decisions. So that is all I have to say this evening. With that, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn this public hearing of May eighteenth, twenty twenty.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Ann Chikalo. Was there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ann Santoro. With that, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post motion carries six zero zero. Thanks, everyone, and good night.
Good night. Thank you.